Yeah, it was just a matter of organization.
They'll get there, they'll get there.
Yeah.
Call the meeting order at 5:03 just as Mr. Spencer walked in the door. We have our secretary recording the minutes of this meeting and Mr. Gant is recording with his camera. Anybody else want to record the meeting? The first item of business is to updates regarding the fiscal year 2019 budget and Board of Selectmen's departmental operating budgets. Kelly?
I really, I really don't, I think this is a placeholder in case anything came up that was different at Monday night's meeting after we concluded the Board of Selectmen's meeting, the FinCom met and balanced the budget and made its final vote. So everything here before you is what's been submitted as part of attachment A in the warrant and you have just the latest copy of the latest version of the budget model and the recap summary. So all of that here is effectively.
This is hard, I'll withdraw the question. Can we just buzz through which of the, or we're a guy, I see that he supported, thumbs up and which of them were thumbs down. Because they did some, I was there most of the evening, but I missed the one before.
Can you maybe run and ask Catherine because Catherine knows it off the top of her head and so it may save us some time if I can tap her.
I've got it right here.
And it kind of matches, these two things should match.
They should match, yeah. I just happen to use this one.
Yeah, it does.
And I made a note on our votes on that piece paper. We should be able to follow right down there.
Yeah. Although this has more, this has the entire.
Yeah. Well, that's right. All I've got here is.
Selectmen area.
Selectmen stuff.
Steve, the guy from.
Yeah. She went to get Catherine.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to hold it too tight.
Yeah.
He was the one that was so nice.
He opened my dinner.
Very nice, very patient. Yeah, we might do.
I'll get copies of the recap.
Debbie, do you have any extra copies of this?
What do you say?
The recapping.
I do, in one second. I'll give you my copy.
Well, can you make copies because.
Yep. Oh, sure. No problem.
So he's, he was going to work on it today.
I didn't know you could fire them actually. Diesel as well, huh?
Yeah, yeah, we had seen that. It's like the tanks, right?
That might be easier than propane. You don't want big, like, tanks.
Yeah.
That's what Tony's got, is she's going to hit him by the house.
Right, yeah, and these were going to be great, you know, like you could see him from the, you see him from the road, et cetera, yeah. Yeah, Curtis isn't crazy about that.
And that's upsetting, that upset him.
It's like, whoa.
Isn't that $900 each?
I don't know.
Our house should recommend it too. I don't want those tanks showing.
You know, you don't want, yeah. Geez. Way behind the.
I don't say I don't know or I can't do that number because we just, that's something.
That's what she said.
She was giving the exact numbers. Yeah, I agree totally.
John, when we get to item four.
Very responsive.
Ask you to tell us also.
Small print button.
Wow.
I tried to put everything on there.
Thank you. This is great, recapping.
Okay, I got it straight from Catherine. Okay.
Hey Debbie, is this from the accountant or is this from the FinCom recap?
No, this is from Catherine.
Okay.
Yeah, that was me, sorry.
That's great, but it is small.
Just making sure.
Have to get home.
You mean you don't have any devices?
They're in every place.
I got a pair of binoculars here.
Can't be that.
If you want to pass that over.
Okay.
So we can go through the list real quick if you'd like.
Yeah, just tell us.
Yep, yep. The legal services, we had requested $10,000, they approved it for $5,000. Financial audit was approved for $4,100. There was a vote of no action on the town building's electricity and gas. There was $2,000 that was approved for the PEG access, PEG and cable fund, which of course is from separate funds, the general fund. I withdrew the $3,000 request as that was rolled into the capital request for the PEG and cable access, that's on the special town warrant. The clerk other building rental was approved for 300, as was the other election expense for the town clerk for $27.50. There was a vote of no action on the clerk management, public records management software. There was no action on the software maintenance fee as related to the.
Thank you.
PEG software. There was a partial approval for town.
For PEG software?
For the town clerk software.
Clerk, clerk software.
There was an approval of $5,000 for temporary wages for the town clerk's office. The original request was for $17,000 for a part-time employee, which was later revised to $7,000 and then they reduced it to $5,000. So the total approved number that's in the base budget is for $5,000.
I have that, thanks. I should do three.
The, there was, there is money set aside in the salary reserve to enable us or me as the town personnel administrator to work with the board to discuss the upgrade for the town clerk position based on the additional responsibilities regarding the town clerk's role as records access officer. There was.
Since it was in the salary reserve, the FinCom said we don't need to vote.
Correct, correct. $2,500 for medical supplies was approved for the fire department and added into their base budget under other. The $2,000 for contractual requirement for the fire chase contract was approved for the $2,000 and is included in the base budget. The animal control expense was voted no action. Streetlights electricity was approved for $21.75. The rubbish collection was approved for the $20,112 and that is in the base budget.
Well, that's contractual.
Yeah. Parks and cemetery wages, labor, full-time, they did a vote of no action to combine part-time positions into one benefited position, there was no action on that. There was a vote of no action for the vehicle and equipment maintenance for $1,000. There was $1,000 approved for the groundskeeping supplies, I believe, for around the cost of the products, so that was $1,000 that was added to the base budget request. And then the library repair and maintenance for $14.26 was approved. Library maintenance and unanticipated was $300 increase was approved. Library service bureau fee was approved for $308. The library network administration approved for $537. The Essex County retirement was approved, this was an actual increase based on Essex County assessment. The health insurance, there was no, that was withdrawn since we are having a 0% increase next year. Medicare tax was approved for $8,649 and that is in the base budget, as is the workers' comp and the property liability estimates. Then the COA tracking software was approved for $400.
That's the maintenance group.
The maintenance, yeah. The COA postage was voted no action. And then the temporary rental space was moved to the special town meeting and will be using access appropriations from the town meeting to pay for that. I believe we'll be using money from the Essex County retirement line.
But that's tailings.
That's tailings. And then finally, the Parks and Cemeteries Holiday on the Green, actually, the Parks and Cemeteries Fire Alarm Monitoring was approved for $1,000. There was a vote of no action on the $1,000 for the Holiday on the Green. The landfill department, there was a request for $40,000, however, $27,550 will be an offset in the Article II, which is basically a transfer. This represents the first year that we'll have basically used all of the funding from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, so that will be depleted and a new department has been established in the budget under the Parks Department. Actually, it's called the landfill department.
The landfill department?
But it'll be overseen by the Parks Superintendent.
That'll be a new line item in next year's budget.
Yes.
It should be in the, in Schedule A, right? Right?
Yeah. Wage one, wage and longevity, $7.50 was approved. Professional services for fire, $2,500, that was approved. That represents all of the actions of the town, of the FinCom. They also voted no action on the capital request for NASCO that totaled approximately The assessment was approved as requested. I'm trying to think if there's any other highlights if you recall. It was a late night, so it was a little buzzy.
It was an early morning, actually.
Early morning, a late night and early morning.
Wasn't late, no. So if this is the problem, there's only one item that really concerns me and lastly, the software component of the town clerk, that's relative to public records.
Yeah.
And so obviously, this is a FinCom rep, which I, which I obviously respect, but there's still a town meeting, there's still a town meeting to vote, but I don't know if there's, I mean, I guess I have a request to, to see whether there's any other way of us funding this, you obviously can generally offer.
We voted for that.
Yeah.
Right. I, I could suggest that, and it would of course need FinCom's blessing, if you will, but that could easily be covered as part of the special town meeting budget transfers. That's originally how I proposed it anyway. Originally, I'd had a separate warrant article to that point, but it could very easily be incorporated as part of a FY18 budget transfer as well. So I think that that would require some follow-up from members of the board or maybe something official that would need to go to the FinCom or some support when we put together our, right now, what we're doing in terms of the budget status is we'll be reviewing all the departmental budgets, making sure that they project to have enough budget to get through the rest of the year without requesting. Sometimes there might be a transfer request at special, sometimes unanticipated things might lead to a reserve fund transfer, but that remains probably the last lever that we have in terms of balancing the budget, meeting any needs. So I would look to this board to probably discuss that at our next meeting in terms of your direction that you'd like to have me focus on with regard to that.
I was, I expected frankly, the second component, which was personnel, you know, not to fly, but sometimes from software, you can get so much more benefit for probably a little expense. We don't really have any indication that those lines are going to decrease, but, so, you know, should I make a motion or something now or what do we do? I'd like us to.
Form a line?
Pursue, I won't do it, but I'd like, I'd like us to pursue another, you know, allowable means to have this fund. I very rarely suggest we do anything against the FinCom rep, but even to that point, if it was, if it was necessary, I just think it's too fundamental, it's just my word kill in the town clerk's office. And at least let's, let's give her some, you know, I understand not, in the scheme of things, not adding people, but.
Then, then I will, I'll make a motion to, to vote, to approve, or to approve the exploration of a different source of funds for 9A and 9B on this page.
Well, 9E anyway.
9A anyway, okay. It's $2,000.
Oh, sorry, B is the.
It would be both.
I thought B was the.
It would be both, so the $4,500 total.
For $4,500, okay. We voted on that and I think it's appropriate to go back and ask them to.
Some other way.
So we're going to investigate as an.
Yeah.
The word is explore in motion.
That's right, yep.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Well, we got it explored and then we can discuss it after we vote on it.
That's right.
Glad to discuss it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstinent?
Now, in the case of exploring, one of the things is that, there's two components of this, one is essentially to procure the license.
Yes.
That's the $2,500.
Yes, $2,500.
The $2,000 is a license fee for the following year. So what we do with the transfer is within this year, it's not a warrant article, we fulfill to another year. So it's important that we explore, but in the exploration, we need to ensure that we have a way of dealing with the $2,000 fee that would be up until next year.
I need to clarify, the one-time cost to get it up and running is $4,500. It includes $2,500, which is a one-time expense, it includes $2,000 for the first year of maintenance. So what is clear is we, we need to appropriate $4,500 for the first year of service, would then need to be further explored is the, is the budget approval appropriation for the additional $2,000 to carry this software into fiscal 2020. That would be, that would be the decision point for next year's budget process, which is do we take the $2,000 and add that to our computer maintenance line?
So let me try it this way, so let's say that we acquire the software, we need to acquire it this year because this year's budget. So if we acquire the software effective June 1st, 2018, then June 1st, 2019, the $2,000 for the maintenance fee is due. So it needs to be in the budget for next year. If we, if we do this, unless we don't want the software to continue.
Well, I think that's what she said.
No, I'm not sure that that's what we said.
Well, forty-five, forty-five hundred bucks, as I understand it, was to buy it and get it up and running. But, but it strikes me that that $2,000 is an annual maintenance fee.
Correct.
Okay, and so if we buy it in June this year with the transfer.
We buy it in July.
Well, we buy it June 30th.
We would buy it in June, we buy it July 1st.
We buy it June 30th with FY18 funding.
Oh, in a trans.
And then it counts for all of FY19 for the subscription. And then it expires at the end of next fiscal year, in which case we can.
But we're going to explore the possibility of finding 4,500 bucks for the first year.
Yeah, okay, but when we do that, we, we need to think about.
Well, you're making a commitment to do it for next year for $2,000.
I mean, you, you have to figure out how we're going to do it. Maybe Kelly's is the right thing, the 30th of June, and we lapse our license hour a day or something like that, and I'm sure the company would probably be happy with that.
They're happy to work with us, they're very.
For that money, they probably are very happy. But we do have to do it right, so we don't get caught.
Yeah, I understand. Any other comments?
No, thank you, I appreciate that.
Let's move on. Okay, Kelly?
Well, essentially, our update is right here. This is our annual and special town meeting warrant.
So item number two is what we're talking about.
The town meeting warrant.
The warrant is, and the warrant is signed as we were informed a bit ago.
So this will be going, we weren't sure if it was going to make it this afternoon or, but it looks like tomorrow morning, Debbie and John will be going to the prison to drop this off so that they can do a printing for us and then that's, we're off from there. One of the outstanding items that we need to talk about is the date for which we want to, now, actually, since moderator is here, we've had discussion briefly about doing a moderator forum and there was a little discussion about the date. We had originally suggested maybe April 11th. There was also further suggestion that it would be for April 18th. Clearly, it's a moderator's warrant, so his opinion is warranted in this. I think that the only issue that cannot.
Since it's his party.
It's his party, he gets to decide what it's going to be.
He's going to decide the date.
It's your decision.
But we should, we should probably settle on that date so we can start to publicize it. I think someone was concerned that the 18th was school vacation week, which no matter when we plan, whatever we plan, there's always going to be a conflict, so I would just.
Well, we also talked about when they would receive the warrant. So the citizens will have the warrant in hand by what day?
By the. So we're going to be mailing it and they officially, hold on, let me just get my.
They have to have it two weeks ahead.
They have to have it on the 17th. They have to have it in their hands on the 17th and since the 16th is the holiday, they'll have it in their hands by the 17th, if not sooner than that. So the, the goal for the 18th was that they would have it in their hands and be able to bring it with them to the forum on the 18th.
Well.
I have in mind.
I would, I mean, it was there, it's, it's fine with me for either the 18th or the 11th. I don't, I think the 18th makes more sense if you're going to have the mailing so that they receive it on the 16th or the 17th. You're probably going to mail it the Friday, Thursday or Friday before, the week before, right?
Right, yeah.
So that would make more sense to me, school vacation, I don't know. It's still going, the purpose of this is to record it and put it up so people can view it that didn't have a chance to see it, so, but really, the 18th works, I think, works best.
I just.
You disagree?
We don't have any voices of that group in our room. The school vacation thing is a big deal to parents with kids, if I can be that bold to turn them back them any years.
But they won't have the warrant on the 11th, right?
They won't have the warrant if you do it on the 11th.
They won't have the warrant on the 11th, will they?
When will it be posted?
We can post it as soon as tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
It's just, it's in electronic form, we could leave copies of it at town hall and the library.
But I think it has more impact when you receive it than the mail.
Agree.
It does.
But, but to be honest, it should be up and on the website for people by sometime tomorrow.
Yeah.
Just for facts, yeah. What do, what do you have sca, you want to do it on like a Monday, the 19th?
That's a holiday, so, wait.
No, no. A holiday.
Oh, on April the 16th?
No, I'm sorry.
It's a holiday.
The 23rd, April 23rd, which would be the Monday after the school vacation week.
That would be the night of the.
And that's one week before town meeting.
And we could reschedule the Board of Selectmen.
I don't think that's a big deal, I just want everybody to know that's one week before town meeting.
Right.
I don't think that's a problem, quite frankly.
It's fine with me, the 23rd, April 23rd. If anything, I would say not to school at our meeting, because people tend to, it's a regularly scheduled meeting on the 23rd, so do it on the 24th.
We've got a select meeting on the 23rd?
Oh, I didn't hear that.
It's a regular, it's a regular. So if anything, we, we'll be to, unless you don't want the selectmen there, move it to the 24th at least, to a Tuesday. And when does the, when does the, when does the planning board have the.
Well, I think for some parents. Definitely. Probably not.
Yeah, you can go.
No, no, it's, no, no. Kids go skiing, they go see grandparents, they take the trip to Disney World.
Here's the other, Kelly, if you want to keep it on April 11th, and we can have, can we have extra copies of the warrant and they can pick it up on the way in?
Absolutely, we can distribute it.
Yeah, okay, then do it on the 11th.
Publicize it so that people can download the warrant in advance.
The 11th work for a.
Yeah, it's going to be available on the, I know everybody doesn't have a computer, but it's going to be available.
Well, you're going to go through it article by article anyway, are you not?
Yeah, yeah, we're just going to.
So you, they don't necessarily need to read it ahead of time because you're going to go through.
I'm going to try, I'm going to try and put it on the computer and project it as well.
That's good, that's good. I thought it'd be nice to have it, they, so they can have it and read it before they go to the meeting.
Right.
But if you're going to go through it line item by line item, that may not be, that good.
And however, we publicize it, if we publicize it, we can reinforce that it's available on the web.
Online, in the library, at the public buildings.
If someone contacted our office and asked for a hot copy, it's not going to be hundreds of people.
Yeah, no, it's usually.
So we're going to schedule it for April 11th then, right?
Okay.
What time?
7:30.
Right, 7:30.
Nice and book here. And it's at the school cafeteria, Proctor School Cafeteria. How do you want to, to.
Have you, have you tentatively scheduled that date with Brad?
I have, I have not, I will, oh gosh, I didn't think of that.
Well, when he's here, you did mention it to him, you mentioned the date, that's why you hadn't.
We had to clarify, okay. So hopefully, I don't think this will be an issue, but I can probably find out tonight as soon as this meeting is over, before we start publicizing the date. I didn't think there was an issue, he didn't bring, he didn't say that there was conflict with any other groups that he's doing.
Okay.
He just, I think he has plenty of time to line someone else up too, if he can't make it.
All right.
All right, so.
And that will be in the cafeteria at.
In the cafeteria. And any of your town people that have vested interest in any of their warrants that want to be there in case there are questions on their warrant, especially those that are, you know.
How, did you, did you want to solicit questions ahead of time like you did before? Is there any pluses or minuses from the, from the budget forum that you wanted to incorporate for this event?
Yeah, you can do that, you can email it to the moderator at TalkSeal and we can have those questions there.
Okay. Any other logistical issues related to annual town meeting or the special town meeting, logistical, I'm just guessing, overflow preparation?
Somebody was indicating to me that we have a limited number of chairs, the last special town meeting, I thought was, I'd like to have enough chairs for people to sit down.
We should put in the exact number of chairs that the room allows and then just say, I'm sorry, and explain that if you're standing, we have to ask you to go to the other room.
Don't, I think there was a shortage of chairs, they put out all of the ones that they had.
Yeah. Well, what's the capacity of the room?
Well, did Beth tell me 150 chairs is all we've got?
Well, that's what she told me, something like that, and that's why I think we need to either find some other place to get more chairs, I mean, I can ask the.
Well, you can rent them.
Huh?
You can rent them, I'm sure.
Do I have funds for that?
I'm aware, but I'm sure you can.
Do I have funds for that?
That's a good point, possibly the church.
I can check with the church, but I mean, it's, to hoof it over, it's going to take a while to set up. And you're also considering if there's an overflow, that there's a monitor in the room and. Yeah, that's another thing that we had problems with the special town meeting, we needed to have a video, we had audio, and we'll have audio this year, but. And will you appoint a, an auxiliary moderator for that room? Yeah, we do have an associate. So I'll take care of that with Beth.
Okay.
One procedural thing, I may, may not come up, but just if that's probably, so, so can you confirm that, from the floor, that citizen petitions can be amended, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so, so just going through it quickly, so citizen petition is on the floor. Someone at that point could bring forward a motion to amend?
Correct.
And then we vote on the motion to amend?
You vote on the motion to amend?
So in that sense, there's no difference between the citizen's petition and any other article?
No difference that I see.
Okay, I'm not suggesting there should be, yes, hold on.
Well, I think there might be one.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I'm not suggesting there should be a difference, I just want to.
I'd be surprised if there's not an amendment on one of them.
No, I think there will, the plastic bags.
The plastic bags.
He thought, he thought that the attachment was inherently.
Again, it's like every other warrant, the amendment's made, you vote on the amendment. The amendments made, you vote on the amendment. You reread the amended if the amended passes and you're voting on an amended article.
Yep, no big deal.
There was also a mention by town council that while we do have a written question on the election ballot with respect to holding meetings at Masco, that it would be the moderators, at the moderator's pleasure, if he wanted to have a vote at town meeting. So there was another mechanism by which you could gauge the opinion of the people who were physically there that night as to whether or not they would like to see the meetings be held at Masco in the future, or at some point in the future. So I just wanted to let you know that that's another available mechanism by which...
I could include that in my opening remarks as to selectmen wanna gauge that response if it would be helpful for future decisions as to where the whole...
A sense of the meeting might be kind of...
I was gonna say, what good does it do? You got an idea about that?
First, I don't think it does any harm, number one. It announces that this is something we're thinking about, which I think helps some people feel that we are in fact being responsive. And I don't think it's a lot of skin off our teeth, by the way. So my inclination would be, if you're willing to do it, Steve, to... Just a sense of the meeting, it's not binding or anything, appearing or referring as well.
I just think you gotta be really, really clear. Actually, two issues at least. One is that it's non-binding, that no one ever thinks it's anything binding. The other is what, this could be a rhetorical question, but what happens if town meeting goes thumbs up and electoral process goes thumbs down?
We decide anyway.
How do you... That puts us in a situation of waiting.
Good point.
And I think if it's all been unanimous, I think you really need to take account of it. I think you need to take account... You can do it, quote, as a census of the majority.
See, the ballot specifically says non-binding.
And the ballot's clear, it's...
On the town meeting floor, half the people may not hear that.
And the ballot's counted. It's 124 to 123, or whatever it is. I'm concerned about... I'm not trying to get less input. I'm concerned about the duality of two mechanisms and adding confusion.
So as you, as selectmen, what are you gonna use to gauge? You're gonna use the ballot?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay, then there's no need to get a sense on town meeting floor, that that's what you're gonna use.
We have actually a greater responsibility than simply what the people want. We do have to ensure that it's safe. Whatever we, whatever we set as a location needs to be a safe location for whatever the circumstances.
Safe for the moderator too, right?
What's that? Particularly, particularly for the moderator.
We've never thrown tomatoes and eggs at the moderator.
Oh, the first time.
proverbial tomato.
But I know one. The town's got a lot of history.
Okay, we gonna move on?
Hope so.
Where are we, item four?
I thought...
You done with that?
Do you have a question?
I do have a question.
Yeah, now would be...
I want Mr. Spencer to give us a little update on a project that he's been working on.
Happy to do that. I have been interested in questions around medical marijuana for a long time because of friends and family who live out of state. They're in states that have licensed medical marijuana, the 71s and D. They are from IDU, from their reports benefiting. So I have a personal interest and so on. The second thing is that from, I've known the casualty, I've known the Patton family over the years. So I introduced myself to Bob when I'd not met when he came to the planning board meeting. And long story short, I said, you know, I'm not in a position to negotiate anything, but would you be willing to answer some questions? Because I think it would be very interesting to get some background as we go forward. He has been far more forthcoming than I expected. Or you, a lawyer, would have advised.
If I was his lawyer.
So I'm gonna just cover quite quickly six areas. History, project plans, medical marijuana versus recreational, post-community agreement, fees, and the timeline. The history is that the Pattons have had that farm for a long time. It's been in the family. And they have most recently been using it as a community sustainable agricultural CSA farm up there. And they've had a lot of problems keeping staff there. I think the last eight years, they've had five different CSA managers. They're finding that to be a little bit of a strain. They've had many offers for, to settle in for housing development, which they have chosen not to do. And I think their ties to the land over time, in particular, Mrs. Patton, Joanne Patton.
Can I ask a question at this point? They gave away a lot of property in Hamilton, to the town of Hamilton. Are we talking about the property that they own in Topsfield? Is it all in Topsfield?
Yes, they own some in Hamilton, they own some in Topsfield. They are obviously taxed as separate lots to different towns. This operation would be entirely in Topsfield. However, they have enough land in Hamilton, although it's not as ideal from their point of view. If it didn't pass in Topsfield, they'd probably see if they could do it in the Hamilton side. So right now, they're holding off on housing offers and everything in hopes that they won't have to do that. They also have a history of supporting veterans organizations at many different levels over time. And the family, including the matriarch, Joanne, have really picked up a particular interest in the plight of veterans with PTSD and so on. And became engaged in learning more about the research around the use of marijuana as a potential form of medication for PTSD patients. And so they're interested, they have done their preliminary application with the state and are wanting to move forward with the marijuana cultivation operation. Project plans, location would be on a Topsfield lot. The entire operation of the farm, from the fencing inside, would be on the order of two or three acres. It would take the whole lot, or you know, they would break the lot up. But it would be, that would be the, if you will, developed area there. The, to my complete surprise, it's funny, I just asked a question and I get things. I was told I could share this information, but I'm not gonna pass it out because... And I have tons more questions, but I've been hesitant to ask because we're not in negotiation with them. So I'm just kinda collecting details on things. First thing, their vision to improve the lives of veterans, their families, and local communities they live in. That's the family mission, the vision. The mission on this is to be an industry leader providing the highest quality, safest, and most sustainable organic medical cannabis products and business practices and their values and so on. So they have suggested, and I want this back, but I will pass it around with you to see. Their total facility, they seem to be 37,000 square feet, 38,000 square feet, which is a little under an acre.
Just under an acre, yeah.
The total flowering canopy, that's the greenhouse piece, there's a picture of a greenhouse in here, would be about 22,000. And then they would have office, packaging, shipping, storage facility with 12,000 feet. And then for employees and room for the trucks that come pick it up, 12,000 square feet. Their total estimated cost of getting this ready for initial production is...
Up and running.
Up and running is $3.5 million. I'm gonna talk in a moment about fees and so on and how that's gonna affect us. Their projected revenue, and this may take a number of years to get there, but their projected revenue, I can't believe they shared this, but they did. And they, they would sell top buds, the stuff, as it's directly smokable or it's sold to other people as an ingredient for products and so on. But primarily, it is the top bud stuff that is sold. And it's all packaged up and then available through a medical marijuana dispensary.
And their intention, I'm sure, is to sell wholesale forward.
They don't have a choice.
They don't have a choice, okay. So we don't need to worry about our retail market or anything like that?
They don't, they have to have a retail outlet that is captive. But they have assured me, all the locations they're looking for, for market reasons, are on the South Shore. Brockton, Foxborough, Plymouth, that area down there.
So we don't need to address the issue that we're gonna have a retail store?
They don't have, they don't want, and I'll talk about no retail. And they won't be selling to the Riley store up the road. So it would, it would end up leaving here.
But come back to what you said, but they must have a retail outlet, so they were all on the South Shore or someplace else?
And retail outlets can be medical only, or they can be recreational and medical. The state has just determined that if you have a recreational facility, 30% of your stock must be medical marijuana, so that medical is available at any outlet. That's irrelevant to our particular concerns, it's just an interesting thing how medical is...
But just a pause for a second, just to be clear. So under our understanding of current law regulations, so that they have the cultivation, they have the greenhouse, that's the cultivation facility.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about the operation.
But this is for, I'm trying to, just one, is it, again, that's medical, strictly medical cultivation.
Right.
But they are required, I'm saying, I'm asking, this is a solid question, I'm trying to... They are required, though, to have a dispensary, they have to.
They have to have a dispensary.
Somewhere else.
It does not need to be recreational. And my understanding is they're not planning on another farm to do recreational anywhere. They only want to do medical.
So if they grow medical?
Yeah.
And have a dispensary for both?
They won't.
Oh, they won't?
They say they're not.
The dispensary will be...
Dispensary can be medical only. If you do recreational, you must also be an outlet for medical patients. So that is a state rule.
Okay, so one of the allowable options is for them to just be medical for cultivation and also medical at the dispensary.
They would have to have an entirely separate farm to do that.
To be recreational?
To do recreational.
Yeah.
And it won't be in Topsfield.
Well, I think we oughta develop that idea a little bit because there's gonna be a lot of people that say, hey, this recreational stuff is gonna slip under the door.
Hang in, hang in, I'm gonna fill you in on that.
They can source recreational from someplace else if they have a dispensary?
No, if it's a medical dispensary.
I don't know, but I see the question. They don't wanna do it themselves, I understand that. But they, and it doesn't, shouldn't make a difference to us because they're going someplace else to do it. But I just, we need to have an answer.
They don't want to do recreational. Whether they legally could or not, I don't know. But they will never be shipping anything recreational from here. And there are some practical as well as legal reasons for that.
You mean, you said from here, you mean to Topsfield?
From, from the Topsfield cultivation.
Oh, that's right, okay.
They will do medical only. And there are some very practical reasons they will not be doing it. Besides their commitment to not wanting to do recreational, there's some very practical reasons why they can't grow a recreational next to medical.
Next to medical. But the thing to understand, I think we want to understand is, is it an option? If they have a dispensary where they decide to do both in someplace on the South Shore, they're not gonna grow recreational, okay?
Could they have a little source of...
Can they source that from another place? Just that we need the answer, I don't need the answer now, but we gotta have the answer. I don't know the rules on marijuana.
Maybe, it's not clear.
Okay.
And that's still, we can sort it out.
Do we care if it comes from...
Well, we shouldn't care, we should, we should not care.
But we should know what the answer is.
But we should know the answer and we should understand that some things are what they have said.
Right, I think there's a, there's a level of us knowing what they could do, and then there's a level of what they're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand, I understand. I'll talk about the controls on this, I don't think we have to worry about it.
Last one, but probably from other knowledge and probably from listening to you, it seems like in theory, they could get a recreational cultivation allowed if by Hamilton in Hamilton. I know, I understand the respect of the state.
I suppose technically they could, yeah. And we don't have any control over that anyway.
So we're relying on their representation.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're gonna have much stronger checks in prevention of there being any recreational in Topsfield. So I'm not worried about that, and I'll go into it. The products are gonna be the top buds, which they sell directly. They package them, so they'll have some packaging equipment in this facility. They get all packaged up, everything, well, get that second. The second two products are what they call flower, premium flower and oil. And those are what go into the brownies, the candies, all those sorts of things. They are not planning a manufacturing facility. They will do packaging of those materials according to the state law and how that has been done. It's all sealed and everything. They have, everything has to be weighed to a gram and it's very, very, very regulated. So the nice thing is, we don't have to worry about that. When the material leaves the, their farm, I asked, so what do we do? Semi-truck every other day? Because I know people are worried about a semi-truck going down, the tailgate banging over, THC laced candies dropping out on the highway, and the kids following the scent of pop brownies. In fact, what it is, is they, they bring, it's gonna be two to three pickup trucks, it's gonna be two to three panel vans per week. They do not intend to get a license to transport marijuana products or marijuana. That is a separate license and any licensed applicant may have only three licenses. So if you have a recreational farm, you have a medical marijuana farm, and you have a dispensary, you can't get a license to transport. If you have a medical dispensary and you have a medical cultivation and you have a license to transport, you can't get a recreational. Only three licenses per applicant, number one. Number two...
But what they will do is hire a contractor to do that?
There are companies that do it, and they say that there are pages and pages and pages of requirements and they gotta vet the drivers. And just as you see, you know, things like drugs and money for banks and so on are very carefully controlled and you just, low visibility, and yet, things of a lot of value get moved because it's a highly regulated industry, that will be the case here. So they're by law, they're unmarked trucks and so two or three per week. So it's not up here. By my calculations and information, they can do about four harvests a year. It's about 800 plants in that space. And they're projected, and they say this is annual...
So that requires a greenhouse?
That's the 22,000 that I talked about, 20,000 square feet. Their total annual cultivation gross revenue, which they're hoping to do, and it'll take a few years, this is, they call it year three, although he said it might take longer than that. We have $14 million. Talk about fees in a moment, that might come out of that. So that's the size of it. I asked about water usage and they will be using a fair amount of water, but it will be no more than what the CSA used.
Yeah, okay.
And they will, because it's in a very...
That farm used a lot of water, I'm sure.
It did. And because it's in a controlled area, they will, they are planning to use some water recovery methods. There's no reason they can't do that. Now, how much, what extent, I don't know. But it is not going to be an increase in the draw. I don't know if they draw for wells now, my guess is that they do for the farm.
I'm sure there's no city water up here.
Yeah, so, but anyway, that's the case. Environmental, they're going to be 100% organic as they were with the farm itself. So there'll be no change in that, no chemicals going in, so on. And they have to deal with green belt and other places that only land around and runoff requirements and so on and so forth. So that's basically projected revenue. It will be, this is an important question, I think, I got... It will be a for-profit, not a not-for-profit. They will have a not-for-profit organization that does the donations, sponsors research, and so on and so forth. That's kind of a family thing, that's not something they have to license with us. They will get contributions from the for-profit business and then will distribute by whatever means they choose. But that's gonna have potentially a positive benefit for us. Let me talk very briefly about medical versus recreational marijuana, recreational marijuana. The thing that the kids buy it on the street, what they like is THC. THC is the one that gives you the actual high.
What's THC?
It's the active ingredient.
Oh, that's a chemical.
It's the psychoactive ingredient in marijuana.
That's the oil, is that the oil?
Well, it's a component of the oil, it's a component of the oil. And marijuana, just like grass of the lawn type, there are many different varieties. And they are, what's happened, and I wanted to bring a sheet, but I couldn't lay my hands on it from Maine.
I thought you were gonna say you were gonna bring a sample.
That was your request, that's a new one.
See, you guys keep coming, you might get a sample.
See the audience grow.
Oh, yeah.
Important thing to understand is that...
Not at town meeting.
Medical marijuana, they seek to increase and optimize the amount and balance of cannibaloids, CVDs, which are also in marijuana, as well as THC. For the recreational user, by and large, THC is what matters. And so they get percentages that are in the teens and above and so on and so forth. Medical marijuana, by and large, they try to... Medical marijuana, by and large, they try to really keep the THC down because the committed medical users don't wanna spend all day not having pain but being so high they can't get anything done. So they actually, THC is lower in medical marijuana and then this company will buy seeds and so on that are certain mixes of different things, and I don't know what that's going to be. They're going to take and put them in clusters because the cross-pollinization, it's important that they share the biome for that particular type. They have their own kinds of little bacteria in the soil and all these sorts of things. So they'll be kind of creating separate little areas. The reason they wouldn't want recreational there is that they're very likely to lose some of the benefits of the medical and unintentionally increase the bene, the recreational side of things, benefits if you're recreational, I guess. And these things get tested by the state and so on, so we have hands off on that, but the state's gonna be watching very closely, so they will be paying attention. Note that the amount of testing that goes on, even by the facility itself, is fairly high. The Georgetown operation that just shut down recently, that was something they discovered in their in-house testing. They reported to the state because this is new and they don't wanna screw up. They recalled all their products and stopped all operations. And what it was, was a little tiny bit of pesticide that had come in from someplace outside, that used it there. But it had come in perhaps in some kind of fertilizer that they bought, was supposed to be organic and so on and so. That's how tight things are.
So if we just understand, the, if you would, active ingredient, recreational, this is the law, is.
Yep.
Is HTC?
THC.
THC.
Excuse me, T.
It's the psychoactive, psychoactive, the others are medically active, but that's psychoactive.
Recreation, I'm calling it the active ingredient, that's the key thing that somebody's looking for.
That's the recreational looking for, yes. The medical are not looking for THC.
What I'm asking then is, in the case of medical, what is the active ingredient?
Various kinds of CBDs, they're known as cannibal, CBDs, they're known as cannibaloids. And there are different balances and different kinds, and I'm not a chemist.
You, you taught me, now I know.
Yeah, and I continue that there are.
The words, when I hear them, at least I understand. Thank you, John.
A lot of these companies hire botanists on staff to manage, because it's like, you know, was it Gregor Mendel who was doing all the plants and seeds and everything? They're trying to do that to maximize certain things. And there are some that are supposed to, cannibaloids make you feel calm, some of them seem to address pain and so on and so forth. So if you go to a marijuana dispensary, you tell them what your affliction is, you're like, I can't sleep or I have chronic pain or I have this or that, and they will recommend something that by the trade, they recognize as being better for them.
Based on the chemical analysis of that.
They know because of how they've raised it.
Yeah.
Does, does a doctor?
Yes, a doctor has to provide a prescription.
It's gotta write the prescription to, to do it.
No. Well, let me tell you what happens.
No?
To get a prescription, you have to have a doctor, but.
Yeah.
Problem is, all the doctors we know, we have as our PCPs and, and, you know, family doctors and so on, they all take Medicare and other insurances, so they are part of a federal reimbursement system. They cannot, because it is not legal with the feds, they cannot write a.
Prescription.
Prescription for marijuana. What's happened is, an industry has sprung up and it's, it's big enough to support folks up in Maine. There are doctors who drop out of the sort of caregiving in my office thing and become pot doctors. They basically recommend, so you call them up, most of them, they're doing it now, believe it or not, by FaceTime or, you know, some kind of video conference. And you send them your medical records from your doctor about your complaints, so you have to have a genuine medical complaint. This doctor looks at it and basically you give your credit card, you pay him 100 bucks or 150 bucks, they write a prescription and off you go and get your medical marijuana license from the state and then you can go do any store. You can't even get in the stores.
Perfectly legal.
Well, because they're not collecting money from anybody out in federal levels.
I can refine it a little bit in terms of Massachusetts. There is an approved list, a specific approved list of authorized MDs.
Okay.
Or authorized to do medical.
And that's what he's calling a pot doctor?
Yeah, that's, that's different though, I'm familiar with that, that might be in other states, but.
But there's some dangers.
You know, just, just, we wanna have accurate information. So, so you can't go to Joe Fieldman doctors, it's gotta be one of the docs on this list. Then they go through at least a superficial examination and interview. And there's a list of certain medical conditions, diseases that automatically qualify you. And then there are some that are discretionary.
Oh, okay.
And then they submit, my word, an approval to the state for a license. It's not really a prescription, it's, it's a medical okay towards your license.
Yeah.
Which the state then issues for a medical marijuana license for a patient. And that allows the patient to go to the dispensaries. So it's not like a script for each time. But when you have a license, you can go to the dispensaries and then.